Wish to call the order of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for June 25th, 2024. Ask everyone to please stand at this time and we'll have our prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day that you've given us the beautiful sunshine, the county that we live in, and all the many things that we have. But may we always remember the things that we do have and enjoy that all come from you. Father, we ask that you give us guidance as we go about dealing with the county's business, as we deal about planning for the future of this county and making those plans. Father, we also thank you for this country as we're about to celebrate another birthday and the things that we have here, that the freedoms that we enjoy. And Father, we ask that we continue to work to preserve those freedoms. Father, we ask that you be with us. We ask that you guide us and you protect us. We offer this prayer in your son's holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may all be seated. At this time, we'll have our roll call determination of quorum.
Jim Abrowater?
Here.
Jeff Phillips?
Right.
Mike Kush?
Present.
Lee Bogel?
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch?
Here.
David Jones?
Here.
Chip Pinion? Marvin Whitworth? Jim Thompson?
Here.
Pettis Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. We ask now for the approval of our minutes from June 10th, 2024, from our vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed those minutes and they are correct. Therefore, I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, they have been approved. Public comment period. Anything being called in?
No, sir.
We do not have any comments for this morning. Items withdrawn or deferred.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing there. Move right into our new business, starting with 7A, item one. David Branch, 24403, is requesting an off-site septic soils easement waiver for property located at 3675 Last Cassis Pike, tax map 60 parcel 55.01. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you and good morning, everyone. The applicant owns the property, as you stated, at 3675 Last Cassis Pike. They'd like to make an addition to their home, but they would need additional septic soil for the additional bedroom they'd like to add. The property owner at 3655, which is actually the property in front, Mike, has got a concept plan there showing on the screen. He's kind of circling the property in question and the septic site that the applicant's looking for, the easement for. That owner has agreed to allow the applicant to have an easement for the additional soil on their property, which, as this waiver is for, is for the off-site soil easement. We did ask, when we were talking with the applicant, if it were possible to just re-subdivide it to property so the additional soil area would be on the subject property. The applicant indicated the other property owner wasn't willing to sell, but was willing to grant him an easement for that. That's kind of the background of this particular request. Is the applicant present? Yes, okay. The applicant is here. So he'll be, or will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Misses, questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, this is just a question for my own personal information. When you're doing an addition, excuse me, I'll start over. When you are doing an addition like this, where they're adding an extra bedroom, do you, this new field or this new soils, do you have to design that just for that new addition, or do you have to design it for the addition plus some extra capacity? What is the rule generally for that?
You typically have to have the correct.
Turn your mic on.
You have to have the correct square footage of the soils area. You might have to add some additional field lines in the existing system to handle that extra bedroom, but it's typically a number.
Yeah, it could be a situation where there's enough soil on there, including their backup on the existing lot. This would give them additional capacity for the backup if they needed it. So the soil that he would be using for the additional bedroom would be made up for with the additional soil that he's trying to get on this property. Could be a situation like that.
Up here.
Doug, when we make a waiver like this, it is forever?
Yes, unless the parties involved decide by their own accord to terminate it. I mean, at that point, yeah, the waiver and the easement would go with the properties at that point. They would want to put something in both of their deeds so that both parties, whenever these current owners don't own the property anymore, would know that there is a septic easement there. So, but, you know, for whatever reason, the two parties decided, well, we don't need it anymore, whatever, and we could abandon it. That would be between them at that point.
Very good. That, so the, both of the property owners are aware of that, correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, he's nodding, the applicant's nodding.
And if so, is that, is this something that staff is comfortable with?
I mean, we've looked at these kind of situations before and the planning commission has approved these kind of requests before. We look at them on a case-by-case basis. You know, if they get the waiver and they make TDEC happy as far as what needs to happen, then, you know, at that point, once the plat, they'll have to do a plat with this because of the easements involved. But after that, you know, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it, as far as our involvement goes.
Thank you.
Other comments?
If you're ready for a motion, I'll make a motion.
We take a motion.
All right. Mr. Chair, if both parties are in agreement and if both parties certainly understand the consequences long-term, I would make a motion to approve. Subject to staff comments.
Motion approved with staff comments. Second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving into item B, submitted for final plat approval, number one. Esteban One Lot Subdivision, 242030, one lot on 1.04 acres, zoned RM, located along One Mile Lane. Jericho Eastman is the applicant, includes a waiver for an off-site septic soil easement. Eastman. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to divide about an acre and the existing house from its parent tract, leaving a little over 10 acres. There is an existing fire hydrant located directly across One Mile Lane from the subject property, so there is no need for a fire hydrant waiver. The existing field line area and backup soils will remain on the larger tract. We did request while we were reviewing this plat, we did ask that if the septic site could just be made part of the new lot, because if that were the case, then there'd be no waiver necessary for this. The applicant, however, did not wish to do that. They wished to go in the direction that they're going right now. Beyond that issue, the rest of this plat is in good order. If this weren't for the waiver, we could have handled this administratively. So I don't know if it's, because you can kind of see on the plat there, Mike's got it up, you can see the existing field line area right there and then the soil area behind it. Maybe it was just too much, too far over, I don't know. But to us, it made a lot more sense if they just included it, but the applicant may be able to speak more to that. Is the applicant present for this particular plat, the Esteban plat? They are not. So anyway, with that, we'll be happy to answer questions.
Doug, did they give a reason why just one acre? Doesn't have a septic site.
Right.
Are there 10 acres? Why just one?
They just, they didn't. I mean, they're allowed to go down to 15,000 square feet because of the zoning, but they just made it an acre with the existing house, probably to encapsulate all the structures and everything there perhaps, but no other reason was given beyond that.
Looks like staff had the recommendation to make the septic site part of the new lot. Is there a reason why they don't want to do that because of the recommendation to the staff, or is the applicant here where?
Well, yeah, I asked. The applicant doesn't appear to be present, but, you know, when we, that was one of our comments, was, you know, why don't you just put the septic site as part of this subdivision? You don't have to go the waiver route. And really, the only response was the owner doesn't wish to do that. That was, that was pretty much, I think that was the, I think that was the response we got from the surveyor on the comments.
Mr. Chair, if that's the case, I would make a motion that I do not wish to approve the application.
Have a motion to deny. Have a second. Further discussion. There are no discussion. All those in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
No.
It has been denied. Move on to item two. Item two is Clearview Acres, section four, 242045, 61 lots on 25.08 acres, zone PUD, located along Carity Way. 2BC LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission back in October of 2016. This design is consistent with that preliminary plan approval. This is the last section of the Clearview Acres subdivision. Most of our comments have been addressed. The plat, as far as we're concerned, appears to be in good order. Mike, I didn't know if you had anything beyond that. Okay. But this, I mean, as far as the plat itself is concerned, you know, they've addressed our comments. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. P.
Doug, I'm sure it's on here somewhere. How big are these lots?
The minimum lot size, I'm trying to remember on this one.
Looked there 6,800.
Yeah, these are about, I think, 6,800 square foot rough. I mean, all of these are over, a lot of them are over that, but I think 6,800, 6,000, somewhere around in that range. This is one of the earlier planned developments that we, that we looked at with these smaller lots.
These are the lots that we're having issues with?
6,500. Yeah, there is. I'm sorry, ma'am.
These are lots that we're having issues with, that we're trying to correct?
These kind of lots, yes, ma'am. This is what we've been discussing in detail recently.
Or we'll entertain a motion. Anything else you want to ask for?
Think we've been through this before, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this based on previous approval of the plats and with staff comments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? One no. Has been approved. Item three. Ballpark Row Subdivision, 242046, one lot on 1.97 acres, zoned RL, located along Ballpark Road. Carl and Shirley McKnight are the applicants, includes waiver request for the creation of a lot measuring less than five acres that will be accessed via an easement. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to divide about two acres from this parent tract, leaving about six and a half acres. They are proposing, as you stated, to access the lot using a 50-foot access easement, which you can see on the plan on the screen. This, the applicant also owns that tract up in the front, yeah, right there. He owns all of that. Lots off of private easements are required to be at least five acres in size. Obviously, the one that they're proposing to create is a little under two acres. The applicant is asking for a waiver to that provision to allow the lot as proposed. The plat itself appears to be in good order with the exception of the waiver request. So again, you can see that the, those two properties there, the larger and then the smaller, right there, are owned by the same person. So they're just asking for the ability to have a second lot. I want to say it's for a family member, but is the applicant present? Yes, the applicant is present. So they would be able to answer questions on that.
Misses, any comments, questions?
Just a quick question, if I could. I'm not sure it's quick, but that waiver looks like it just kind of splits a couple of different properties. Did staff have an alternate recommendation for the applicant?
Well, the only other, the only other thing that they could really do, because you can see, if they had a little bit more frontage, this might be a little easier to do a flag lot. Their only other option would be a 50-foot along Ballpark Road where the existing house is located. But Mike, I don't remember how far that, the frontage is on Ballpark. I don't remember if they had enough frontage for 100 feet on that. That was, I think, the big issue that they were, they were running into. But that's the only other option. If they had 50-foot of frontage, they could do 50-foot, a 50-foot flag lot back to lot one. That way, they wouldn't need an easement. But that's the only other, the only other option I could see.
I understand that, you know, we're talking about family, but we've also been looking at what's in the long-term best interest of county going forward and future property owners. I've got some concerns with this type of, of an access. If one family member were to want to sell off and the other one didn't, might have some issues there. But if the staff have a recommendation after looking at this?
I mean, it's kind of one, we'll be fine either way personally. You might want to speak with the applicant as far as what their intents are, their intentions.
Applicants are here.
Yep.
Okay, well, would the applicants, would one of the applicants like to come forward and give you your intention of what you, as far as what you plan to do here?
Hi, it's just a one.
Just come right up here and give us your name and your address, please. You can pull that down where the mic is there for you. That's fine. Okay?
As far as, uh, this is only one house, just waiting on people. Everything's on here, right, right in the front door. But that's all we're just.
The lot itself is already landlocked, the larger tract. So, I mean, the easement's gonna have to be there regardless, and this is gonna have to be platted, of course. Well, obviously, because the plat's here, but, I mean, like I said, I don't have strong opinions one way or the other about it.
Thank you for explaining that. Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving into C, submitted for site plan approval, number one, is Farm Credit Mid-America, 243005, construction of a 7,343 square foot office building and associate parking upon a 1.93 acre site, zoned OP, located along John Bragg Highway, Murfreesboro Street. Farm Credit Mid-America, FLC A is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property was rezoned by the Board of Commissioners back in December of last year. The plan is to move the existing Farm Credit office along South Church Street in Murfreesboro to this location. So the site plan that we're looking at here is consistent with what they were claiming when they brought the rezoning application through. Most of our comments have been addressed. Now, I think Mike's got some concerns from a drainage standpoint, so I'll turn it over to him here in just a minute. But as far as the setbacks, the screening, all those parking, all those other issues that we typically look at, from a planning and zoning standpoint at least, the comments have been addressed and the plan appears to be in good order. But I'll let Mike take over the drainage concerns because I know that there were several.
Okay. Thank you, Douglas. Yes, this is one of those challenging areas of Rutherford County that is volume sensitive, and I will show you the reason for our concern. Back in the May 2010 flood event, a lot of this area was underwater. So, and it drains to enclosed depression, and over time, the water soaks in or evaporates out. So what we had to do, we had to work with staff to make sure that none of the neighbors are adversely affected by what they're proposing to do. So let me go to the site plan. This is essentially the layout of the 7,300 square foot building, the parking around it. They'll have one access off of Murfreesboro Street, not on John Bragg. We talked with TDOT, just a sidebar, that this was acceptable to TDOT, this entrance over here. But going back to drainage, like I said, this entire area would fill up with water, and it does in, you know, heavy and extended rain events. So what we had them do is model this whole area. What was the water surface elevation before this development happens? And then what will the water surface elevation be after this new impervious areas added? You know, the building, the parking, all that stuff where water won't soak in. So they have worked with us and have created a large stormwater management area in the back. It will have a stormwater quality unit that will help clean the water before it goes into this stormwater management area. So we are comfortable with their design, and they have, they've worked with us diligently on this to keep the water surface elevation where it was before all this new impervious was added. So we're, we're good with, with their submitted design stormwater.
I'm gonna make a comment. I'm looking, and I had looked at this earlier last week, on your, on the engineering plan there on the parking lot.
Yes, sir.
I can see that's designed a little different from some parking lots. It's designed more to handle pickup trucks with trailers.
Yes, it is, it is a large, we did look at getting a fire truck around the site as well. So if, if we can get one of Josh's big 50-foot fire trucks around there, we feel comfortable.
This, this building's similar to one that they've had at, in Murray County, but, but they, they do their parking lots because they have farmers to come and get loans at Farm Credit and things of this type. But the parking lot has it where you can bring a, if you've got a three-quarter ton pickup pulling a cattle trailer, you can get it in and out and get it through there without it blocking it. So it's designed that way. But I just wanted to mention that this is one of those engineering feats that thinks about the customer more so than, than just trying to build a parking lot, which I have to appreciate when, when we're trying to do something. Sometimes they're just a parking lot, but this one's well done in that manner.
Right. So Commissioner Reed's saying, you know, what he's saying is true, that the standard parking width is nine feet, and this one, they're having at least 10-foot wide parking bays. And so that, that will help with the wider pickup trucks.
In review of the grading and drainage plan, it looks like they're not putting in excessive fill for the building, and it looks like they're cutting a little bit below the existing grade in the pond.
They're cutting more than they are filling, they are filling some areas back here, but they're offsetting that with additional cut in this area to help keep that water surface down.
Are they looking to, it looks like they're looking to take advantage of the sinkhole that's there and keep that open and functioning, and that's what that looks, okay. Just, that's what I was reading it. Thank you.
Or that, that, that open throat, they'll, they'll keep that, and they won't disturb that. They'll dig around it, but they'll keep that open throat there. And that's, we're, we do a little bit more conservative. We assume that that sinkhole is plugged, because, you know, sinkholes are fickle beasts. You know, they can pump water out as well as they can pump, you know, bring water, drain water to them as well.
Do they have to have any agreements in place with the adjacent property owner as far as maintaining that, or is that?
No, as long as it's what they're doing on their property and they're not impacting the surrounding neighbors, we didn't require any.
Okay. It looks like it's really close. That's the only reason I ask.
Well, yes, sir. They, it's, they've over excavated like 6,400, 6,500 cubic yards of material to help keep that surface down. They had, you know, the original volume plus the 6,500.
I'll make a motion to approve. Subject, staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Have a second. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. It is approved. Moving now into item two, going into Oak Towers at Rock Vale, 243010 is the number. Construction of a 130-foot overall height, monopole communications tower on a 60-foot by 60-foot lease area of a 2.67 acre site. Zone CS, located along Clear Ridge Drive. Oak Towers is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property received a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals back in March of this year for the proposed tower. This site plan is consistent with what they showed during the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. Most of our comments have been addressed, again, from a planning and zoning standpoint. The plan was pretty straightforward with a minor, a few minor things they had to adjust. However, I will turn it back over to Mike here in a moment. I know they've been working with the applicant on some known local flooding issues in the area, not FEMA-related, but local flooding issues. So changes have been made to the site plan due to that, but I'll turn it over to Mike to further discuss the concerns that they had.
Okay. Thank you, Douglas. Again, another challenging piece of property. Apparently, cell phone, cell towers are no longer needed to be on top of hills or mountains. They need to be, what was the terminology they used, Douglas?
Yeah, with the new 5G technology, it's becoming more of a proximity issue than it is a height issue. So that's why most of the towers we see anymore are smaller towers, and there's just more of them. You're seeing a lot of these, this is not one of them, but you're seeing a lot of these small cell-type towers in the city. If you know what they are, you can see them. They're typically on poles, light poles, or just telephone poles. Like I said, if you're not familiar with one, once you, once you know what to look for, they're, they're pretty easy to spot. But proximity is more of a concern than height anymore.
Right. So this area, again, is a volume-sensitive area that, you know, drains to a sinkhole on this side of Clear Ridge Drive. So what they're proposing is put the, the cell tower location on the north side over here, an area that does, is prone to potential flooding. So we've been working with their design engineers on making sure that, we recommended that they build up the site to be over Salem Highway, and they are doing some things to address that. They are filling the site somewhat, but I'll show you on the plans. They didn't elevate it to the complete spillover that we typically ask for, but we did talk with them, and it's not gonna have typical structures. It's essentially cabinets for the electrical, or the communication equipment, but those will be elevated on elevated pads. There is a generator. The generator portion is sitting on top of a tank, so it's gonna be above that spillover elevation. Let's see. Oh, and like I said, the cabinets, they are gonna be elevated on concrete pads. The electrical panels will be elevated. Let's see if I can find that detail for you. That's one pad. Okay, this, these are the communication cabinets. So it's not a typical structure, structure, but they are gonna be elevated on these concrete pads. So they're not raising the whole site up, but just the concrete pads for the components. And we're, we're okay with that. That's a long way to say we're, we're good with this.
Questions and comments?
I tried to make a call, find out a little more about these towers from a fellow I had a lot of respect for. I hadn't made any contact with him yet. I just know this is the interest of subdivision. Does anybody have any say about popping this thing up next to houses?
When?
Hours fall, are you worried about any structures around it?
Yeah, when it went to the Board of Zoning Appeals back in March, there were a couple people that did speak, had some concerns. people that did speak, had some concerns, the location of the tower, what happens if it falls, those kind of things. Now, I will say, one of the pages here, and Mike, I'm not sure which one it is, but yeah, one of the pages here actually has the fall radius if the thing were to fall straight down. And it's not completely contained on the property. A lot of it is, yeah, here it is. You can see if it were to fall completely, most of it's gonna be contained on the existing property. Now, there may be some barns and things. It may spill over to the, the other side. That being said, these towers are engineered so that if there was some sort of a failure or something comes through, they're supposed to collapse on it on themselves. They're not, you know, there's, I don't know what you call them, but there's points built into the tower that if it starts to fail, it's gonna collapse in on itself, supposed to falling straight down. So, I don't think that's going to be an issue, provided it was engineered properly, which I would assume that it is. But that was the, those were the, the primary concerns. Of course, we had some folks, one person, it looks like, looking at the minutes from the BZA, had some concerns about property values and those kind of things. But the board did ultimately approve their request, and, you know, I hate to say this, but at the same time, you know, to some extent, we're the ones driving the need for these towers, because we all have these things. So, I mean, it's the reality. But, but yeah, now, of course, this is just a leased property. He's leasing this area from the property owner. So, you know, depending on which way the tower were to fall, of course, if it were to fall and, you know, not, if it were to fall straight down, it probably would've hit some of those barns more than it would hit anything else on the existing property. So, but again, they're supposed to collapse on themselves, so they don't do that.
Yeah, give, Mike, go back to that picture you just had, and I think zoom that out a little bit, not in, but go out, and then you'll see the houses in development just across the street of 99. Can you go out any more there? There's quite a bit of activity going on there. Gives you an idea. If I was buying a house, I would certainly have an issue having to see that tower now. With that being said, I mentioned this the other day at Rock Vale, at high school, and first thing staff says, oh, thank God, I hope it's Verizon. So, you're right, that's kind of a two-edged sword we got there, and if I had the property, I'd wanna lease it to a tower, you know what I'm saying? That's where we're at. So, I just, I got mixed feelings about that. The other question, I wanna talk to my guy that I have a lot of respect for, is, he's told me in the past, by rights, there are certain things FCC can come in and say, we need towers here and put it up. Is that one of these situations here, or is it not one of these situations?
Well, the FCC, there are, there are provisions in federal law and state law that don't completely preempt local zoning regulations, but go a long way if there's a need demonstrated by the, the carriers, that this is a, kind of an area that's in, is in need of that kind of service. Now, that doesn't mean that we simply just have to accept them, you know. The issues Mike was discussing a little earlier as far as flooding and those kind of things, those are valid concerns. And there may be some sites where there may be a need for service, but the site itself, let's say it's in the middle of a wetland or something like that, that doesn't preempt necessarily the fact that they can just build on a, on a wet, regulated wetland. So, we do have some oversight authority, but I will say that it is limited as far as what we can consider. You know, there are some things that the state law and the federal law basically say you can't use that as a basis for denying cell towers. But again, they've gone, as the towers themselves have gotten smaller, I would say, the amount of public outcry that we hear whenever we see, we don't see many of these anymore, but when we do see them, they typically are smaller. These don't rise to the level of requiring lighting or anything like that due to FAA, and, because I think 200 feet is the, the cutoff for that. So, they're not as intrusive as they, as they once were.
I'm not saying any guide wires, I'm assuming it's just straight up.
It is, yeah. This is what they call monopole, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, right over here.
I know we have approved several of these throughout the county, but I don't remember one that, where the fall area includes buildings and another person's property. Have we approved one that the fall area includes buildings and?
Yeah, I can think of one over, it's, it's an older one, and it's probably taller than these. I can think of one over off of the Flat Rock Road area that was kind of tucked back into some property. But again, in the provisions in the zoning arts even state this, these can be engineered so that they collapse on themselves, that they're not falling straight down. So, that's, hopefully, even in the unlikely event that something like that would happen, it wouldn't be just a situation where the pole just completely falls straight and takes out someone's property, that those points of, again, I don't know what they call them, but points of failure within it that are designed that way, should the wind loads or whatever become too great, it would just collapse in on itself and, within that, the fall zone.
Just one quick follow-up, Doug. With that question, if it did happen to fall over onto other people's property, the county is not liable for any of that. It would have to be the tower's responsibility.
I'll let Nick chime in on that.
Generally speaking, for planning decisions like this, the county's gonna be immune from suit, and it would be the responsibility of the carrier who's engineered the, the design. And, and that, in that scenario, I imagine maybe the engineering has failed, which is unlikely, but I think it would, it would be on the carrier, not the county. Yes, sir.
I see an applicant sitting back there, and his head is shaking this direction, so I take that as a no. The county would not be responsible. But I'll let, I'll let you know, Commissioner, the applicant is back here, and if you have questions, I think we can have those. Pull back out on that site where you had a picture of the, of the schools, if you don't mind, Mike. What I want you to look at is across the road from the middle school, you'll see the public safety building that we currently have built out there. Question I had, since this is, the tower itself is 125 feet with a five-foot lightning rod on top. Before lighting is required on towers, they got to be 200 feet, I believe is what the requirement currently is. But I have talked to our, our fire chief here in the county. Right now, in that area right there, that is a prime spot where we bring in life light quite often. Life light, a lot of time, has been landing in the soccer field that's located next to the middle school, right down here, yes, right in there. But we are also looking at the possibility for a lot of these public safety buildings of putting a small pad near those buildings. In fact, we have found at this one right here, we have done it with the life light, that we can set one right beside that, that public safety building. And it works very well, that they can bring them in right there, and that way, we have somebody that's needing to go very fast through life light by going directly to this building by ambulance, we can have them in Nashville very rapidly. And if you know, now, trying to bring somebody from Rutherford County to Nashville by going to Vanderbilt, it could take you up to an hour, where right here, we can be there in a matter of minutes. So, we're looking at putting those in there. And I know by law, we're not required to have any lighting on towers like that, but I think if, if possible, we could have lighting of some type, maybe at least one light on that tower. It might be good in this area right here, because life light could be coming in that area quite often in the future. As you see the number of houses that are located there, that's a main state highway, and that's a rural area. It covers a lot of that. And, and the more of these towers that we have across this county, this could be a situation we're caught in, because these buildings are gonna have more of these, we'll probably be placing these pads near them, because that's a, a main way we're gonna have transport, transport people within the county. But that's just a question, if that can be a possibility, that if we prove this, that we might place at least one light on, on 130-foot tower. But that's just a, a suggestion. And we have the applicant here, we could ask him that too, but, but that's, that is an area there, and that's what's questioned, and I, I contacted the, the chief just to see what he thought there too, so. Because that is an ambulance station there. Other comments?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say I like that idea. I think that's very forward-thinking, and I'd be willing to make a motion to approve this, providing that that was part of the approval, if that is possible with our, our protocol.
Do we wanna hear from the applicant? They may have some comments on that.
Yes, please.
If the applicant would come forward and?
And while the applicant's coming forward, I did wanna make one other note on this. This is really more of a, of a permitting issue, but just wanted to make sure that this was out there. This will require a gate permit for the gate from our fire and rescue department, and the gate will have to be a minimum of 20 feet wide. So, we'll make sure that, that the plan takes that into account.
Yes, sir. This is Mike on.
Good morning. My name is Michael Sennifer, project manager for the Vogue Tower project here. To answer the questions, we've received FAA approval with no hazard to air flight, but even with an FAA determination that's a positive like that, and it's under the typical 200 feet, you can voluntarily add lights to it. So, that could still be done, and it just requires then you add, when you finish the tower out, you send notification to them of doing so, and then it goes into the database, and would be the same as a tower over 200 feet, where if the tower lights, power ever went out, or tower lights go out, the monitoring service automatically files a NOTAM, which is that notice to airman warning. So, it can be done from a voluntary standpoint. As far as the tower falling, the towers are designed nowadays with an engine, what they call an engineered fall zone. So, essentially, you can pick a point on the tower, everything below that is overdesigned, including the foundation, and it creates a, for lack of a better term, a crumple zone. If you've ever had like a golf club shaft, once it, once it gets that crease, it's done, or an umbrella, it's similar to that. And what it does is the top half of the tower will then fall over onto the bottom half. And the reason for that is for these areas where it's allowed, and you can see the, the reduced radius there, that is the fall zone area versus the, the notion of falling like a tree. And so, the engineered fall zone would reduce that. It keeps it all in the same parcel, and that's typically the way most all monopole sites are designed nowadays.
The, the proposed motion was to approve with the light at the top. Are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Got a question back here, sir.
I, I do have a, a noise question. Are, is any of the equipment inside the building powered by generator, or is it, you got direct electricity to the building?
So, it's all, it's not powered by generator. A large portion of Verizon wireless sites, they put a standby generator there for power outages and emergencies, so typically from an operation, and I think the very bottom of that shows, or it may be the top, I can't see it from here, but it's not powered by generator, it's just for emergencies when there's a power outage. They typically will cycle the power, you know, one day, once a month, or every other month, they crank it up just to make sure everything's there. But other than that, it's fairly quiet. These are cabinets, the old shelter sites, you know, you see the concrete buildings, they would generally, you know, there's some noise, they have two 5-ton air conditioning units on the end. These are fairly quiet. When you walk inside the compound, you might hear a little hum just from some of the stuff going on, but they don't make noise.
Okay. So, so with neighborhood-adjacent, they're not gonna hear a constant hum or a whine or anything like that?
No, oh, no. And, you know, the neighborhood across the street, you know, it's, sites, I had a heat map of usage, and you're talking about, one of you made a comment about the people of the school saying, I hope it's Verizon. During the busy hour, the school's red on the heat map. And, you know, there's a couple of things nowadays with wireless where it's becoming, I mean, everyone lives on it, and your phone is basically a small computer you carry, and you can do anything on it. You know, right now, over 80% of 911 calls come from a wireless device. And, you know, when we were going through the BZA process, I spoke with the property owners just to the east, and then a gentleman that was in that neighborhood that came. And, you know, another statistic about wireless and the need for these facilities to keep up with both coverage and capacity is seven out of 10 home, just over seven out of 10 homes are now wireless only, meaning they no longer have a landline telephone. And so, while, you know, we're considered the modern-day billboards, no one wants to see it, everyone uses it, and, and lots of homes actually have more than one per person of some form of wireless device, it might be a tablet and a phone type thing. So, this is to address both coverage and capacity, and the board is right, they are getting lower, primarily because usage just continues to grow, and so, the frequencies that are used are like beachfront real estate. There's only so much of it. So, instead of having the old tower in the old days, it was 300 feet tall, just booming everywhere, they're building smaller sites to be able to control and reuse that frequency.
So, while we have you, and since this is the planning commission, and you obviously deal with Verizon and have projections, what, what do you see the next five, 10 years, particularly for Rutherford County? Are we gonna see many more of these type of facilities? Or are you on a growth pattern for a couple of these a year? So, what, how can you help us and we help you plan a little better, as this may be the first of many?
Well, they are growing, yes, and it's really a user-driven demand. At the end of the day, they're a business, and just like anyone else, you know, they have to run models and make sure there's an ROI to serve an area or a potential, you know, emergency offload. They are, all the carriers are doing things in core areas. If you have kind of the downtown area or a nightlife, like an area of restaurants, bars, or around a university, your campus, they're doing what's called small cells, those are typically in the right-of-way, just on a telephone pole. Your football stadium over here, the university, I wanna say a year or two ago, put in what they call DAS system, it's a distributed antenna system, and allows better cover, mostly its capacity throughout the stadium, because now everyone has to, you know, show everyone there at the game. You know, at the Super Bowl this year, it was, what, 5, Verizon alone had more than 53, I think, terabytes of data, which is like 5 million collegiate dictionaries or some, it's a, it's just, it's mind-boggling to really comprehend the amount of data that goes through on a daily basis. But I watch my kids, and, you know, they're on their own now, but, you know, I was joking the other day, neither one of my kids have ever bounced their checking account. They get a little notice every day from regions of what their balance is, they don't care. So, it's the way they live. They've never written checks, you know, it's just this different way. Verizon is busy. We are in the process of building one that's in the city limits of Murfreesboro, right actually where the Rutherford County E-91 district, the communications facility is off of, is it Blackman?
Fortress and Blackman.
Fortress Boulevard, yes. And we have one that's actually in planner view off of Maple Street, I believe, close to Maple Street. It's, I can't think of the name right now. But both Verizon and AT&amp;T were heavy investors, maybe two years ago, in the last round of spectrum from the SEC. They spent roughly, I think, together about $50 billion, and that was considered some of the best remaining spectrum to grab. And so, both invested heavily, so both are in a build mode right now, trying to get some return on that investment. I don't know that you're gonna see 10, but I do think they are both, all the carriers, and T-Mobile as well, are working to try to continue to cover areas and address capacity.
And on, kind of on those lines, what he was talking about, something that we require in our regulations, that each tower has the ability for additional co-locations. So, that's to help reduce the proliferation of the towers. Now, of course, you know, height, you know, they're not, they're not all gonna be at the same height, you know? When you look at the tower, you've got, you know, the top, and then you've got, right there, Mike's got it, future carriers, one at 105, one at 90, one at 75. So, there is the ability for additional carriers. This won't completely eliminate the need for towers, but it does help reduce the, the need by having the ability to have co-locations.
Yes. So, this one here is Vogue Towers, and specifically either first, Vogue Towers and Verizon Wireless. But Vogue Towers is a property management company in the telecom space. So, if you can imagine a shopping center, strip center just turned up, you know, they lease out to multiple, so if AT&amp;T was interested in this area, once this tower is up and built, this is an easy grab, or T-Mobile for that matter, or Dish or anyone. So, and they always welcome local EMA and first responders on their sites rent-free.
Looking at that.
Looking at that site, as far as range, how much better out will it go? I know in Eagle Bowl there's dead spots, because I'm about a thousand-dollar customer a month with Verizon. I know I lose them at the red light, so how much more distance will we get from that tower on Verizon?
So, there's a little bit of science that goes into things with refraction and whatnot, but mostly wireless is a line-of-sight technology. So, you know, if you can imagine when you have an umbrella up and the sun or something, the shadow that it gets, that's more or less the way wireless works. And, you know, in the summertime, when there's a lot of leaves on the trees, you may notice in certain places your service degrades just a touch, where in the wintertime, it's not as bad or better. You know, the big push for Verizon specifically, that one carrier here, was to address so much growth and usage down in this area with the high school. But you should see improvement, we had, I don't know if it's in this application, it was for the BZA, we actually had some propagation maps showing where they, you know, kind of a before and after, but again, so much of this was actually addressing a lot of the capacity. I don't know. I've got it, I've got a copy in my folder, I'm happy to show you, if you're interested in looking, but that gives you an indication, but for the most part, other than, you know, everyone benefits the next site, and they all kind of work together to some degree, but it's, from a high level, it's kind of a line-of-sight technology.
Other questions? If not, thank you, sir. I believe we have a motion already, and we have a second, did I hear a second? For the discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes. Moving now on to staff reports and other business, Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. Don't have anything specific, of course, you know we're going into our work session as soon as we adjourn the regular meeting, we'll just go right into room 205 to continue our discussion on blacklots, PUDs, easements, those kind of things. Just a couple of quick announcements, I will say. The Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, the Plan Rutherford Committee is meeting tomorrow in room 205 at 2:30. There will also be a joint Planning Commission, County Commission work session for Plan Rutherford, go over the recommendations of the plan at, being actually held at MTSU's, forgive me the name, the Construction and Science Concrete Management Building, thank you, same building we had our town hall in last year, so that'll be on July the 11th, and that'll be at 6:00 PM, so keep those on your calendar, we'll send you some reminders on that. Neither of these meetings that I just referred to, are decisions going to be made, these are not meant for that, for like adoption or anything like that, it's for a discussion on the recommendations of those, so just be aware of that. When we get to the point of plan adoption, there does have to be a public hearing, and there has to be thirty-day notice of that, so we'll make sure that gets taken care of when we get to that point, but I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that.
Okay. You know, I don't know how many of you look at your calendars every day, there's always some kind of day, today happens to be Sitting Bull Day, but also, I think there's somebody has a birthday today, and I put him right up there with Sitting Bull, I guess. Trey Gooch's birthday is today, I believe, so he's pretty much a chief around this way, so we want to wish Commissioner a happy birthday today. We won't get into how many it is, we do have a fire, we do have a fireman here in case we put candles on it, but we want to wish you a happy birthday today. Any other business to come before this group? If not, we're adjourned.